And one in which redevelopment is sought. So that's the reason why David wanted to approach city planning because potentially here you can have a much better use for the site than the existing dilapidated building. You can see some of the pictures of the surrounding area, obviously, sitting on the park with the surrounding streets highlighted as well. Next slide. You want to go to the as of right development? So, so I think there were questions, I think particularly Steve at the full board had asked for discussion with regards to as of right development. And here's what you get, you know, with the R six existing building as, as sitting on the park, you do have a nine story building fronting on the park. The building itself would be masked towards the street wall with, you know, this would be to take advantage of, of the park, of take advantage of views of the park. You'd have a building which would not be, the floor place would not be as flushed out. So you have a floor area of about 64,000 square feet with roughly 36,000 of that is residential, 17,000 is commercial and 10,000 is community facility. The total height, although nine stories, you would have double height spaces for some of the commercial and higher floor to ceiling heights. So as of right, you can get to the 110 feet that would be available in the, in the proposed scenario. So, you know, this is not, this is not something that you can't do. This is, this is, you know, many times when we come into the community board, we're taking lower density districts or maybe straight manufacturing districts and asking for rezoning or upzoning to allow for residential density and taller buildings. That's not the case here. The R six existing density and the R six existing bulk controls allow the, the building that you see in front of you. The, the major difference, of course, is that here you would have 54 units that would be allowed with seven of those being affordable units. So for the, for those units that are located within the, within the inclusionary housing area, the MX eight area, you would get seven units. So again, by way of comparison, total height of 110 feet, square footage of 64,000 square feet, max allowable units, 54 units, seven affordable. Next slide. So this is the proposal and the proposed development, which Richard and, and Sam can talk to a little bit as far as the modifications. But here you have a building which is 83,000 square feet, so roughly 19,000 square feet different. You can see the massing at the street is, is, has a total height of 115 feet. So it exceeds the as of right by five feet. What you basically get in exchange for allowing this massing and for fleshing out the stories to the rear of the lot is you get affordability. So instead of the 54 units with roughly equivalent commercial and community facility use, you get 74 units almost entirely as affordable units. So this is seen as something which is very valuable, you know, in terms of the opportunity for, for individual owners and really for, for affordable, for affordable units and people renting affordable units to be able to live on the park. It's not something which is necessarily that common, although condo buildings have been produced on the park and you do have nine story buildings through 16 story buildings, you don't get the opportunity for affordable units to be generated, which can take advantage of the park, which also would be located throughout the building and which also would be included within the bedroom mix that exists in this building. So when, again, one of the important parts of MIH, you can see the number of units here, 12 studios, 21 bedroom, 35 two bedroom and seven three bedroom. So you have a building which is heavily weighted towards two bedrooms and three bedrooms as opposed to studios and one bedrooms. Importantly, the affordable units that are generated here would be within the same mix as the units generally. One of the, one of the great benefits of MIH is to allow for unit mix, three studios, five one bedrooms, nine two bedrooms and two three bedrooms. So allows for a unit mix for the affordability, which reflects the unit mix in the building generally, generally. So again, next slide to make it easy by way of comparison. So you have a nine and six story building in the as of right scenario. We have a 10 story building in the proposed. The total height of those buildings, however, is more similar with nine stories at 110 feet massed on the park as opposed to 115 feet or 10 stories under the proposal. The big difference, the floor area in, in the additional 19,000 square feet, allowing for, you know, an additional 12 units of affordability with unit sizes that are, you know, go, are upwards of, of ones, twos and threes. So this is really, I think, this kind of table really well summarizes kind of why we feel that the rezoning works from a contextual standpoint and, and does offer elements solely with regards to the land use in the building beyond what we've discussed with regards to the nature of the building, making the building more green and, and allowing for contributions to the park. Next slide. So this was just a comparison to show some of the building heights around McCarran Park. Of course, 55 white, the, the, the Williamville Hotel in the background, but more importantly, buildings immediately surrounding the park with higher building heights. I think the next slide shows a breakdown by table, table format, which shows some of these existing buildings at building heights. And you can see, you know, we're suggesting a 115 feet for the building height, which is 10 stories with taller ground to floor heights on the commercial floors. And so you can see the building heights here, which range upwards of 115 to 126, 127, 148, 203, 250. So you do get some taller buildings on the park, again, a result of the existing, that existing R six. And it's not an accident in that, in that the zoning at the time reflected R six on the park, it's seen as basically providing open space. So it's, it's, this is not, you know, as, as opposed to having buildings which are located in the middle of, of districts, this is, the park is seen as contributing to open space and so allowing for some, a wider expanse, which complements some of these buildings. Regardless of that, you know, we understand the importance of the park to the immediate neighborhood. We understand the benefit that this offers to, you know, to our site. And so David was, was absolutely thrilled to engage parks in this conversation. We anticipate moving forward with them within the next week, two week and a half with regards to some calls and meetings about what we can actually contribute to make the park, to make McCarran Park better. This is an important part of this proposal. It's, it's, you know, discussing this with parks, it really demonstrates that, that it is not insignificant, contributions that are made by applicants, owners and developers to parks and to the operations of parks, you can really have an impact as far as what, what's really needed at the park, what contributions can be made, how quickly those contributions can be made. It's seen here at, at a minimum as a, as an important part of the proposal. Next slide. Slide merely shows some photos of some of the buildings that were illustrated on the locator map, on the previous locator map. And so the next slide just shows again, in relief and as amassing what the proposed building would look like in comparison to some of these other buildings. With the next slide, we enter into some of the architectural, architectural aspects of the application. I asked Sam and Richard if they want to discuss that briefly, as well as any modifications. And also importantly, when you do get to the portion that so, shows some of the green elements, if maybe Hank, if he is still on the call, can contribute and discuss a little bit about his experience and what we can bring in that.
Thank you, Richard. And it was Sam Fagman from Beanfield Architecture. This slide is just some more technical information of the as of right that Richard just brought up. So Amanda, if you can go to the next slide, please. Richard, just one note regarding the as of right.
And presenters, I just have to interject a question. The MX as of right, that's, that's with a density bonus. If you build a community facility or you include, is that correct? So it's, I mean, organically, the, the FAR for an M12 is just 2.0, but if you add a community facility, then it's, I believe it's 4.8. Correct. And actually, maybe Amanda, just to direct, to, to answer Steve's question, if you just want to go back to the, to the breakdown for a minute of the as of right in the calculations where it's easy to see. Steve, you do have elements of commercial, community facility and residential in this building. So the, the commercial and community facility here roughly equate to the commercial in the, in the proposed scenario with the understanding that community facility space can be occupied and is typically occupied by things like doctors' offices, which qualify as useful. Sam, if you want to continue.
All right. Amanda, if you can go back to, I guess, page 21 of your slideshow. Okay, we can just go to the next slide. So one of the key comments that we got, well, the two main comments we got were, one is to bring more green, to talk about green as well as sustainability. So the first thing we did was contact Hank White. We have collaborated with him quite a few times on projects to discuss how to incorporate a lot more green elements into the project itself. You can see it a bit here, but Amanda, if you can go to the next slide, in some ways it's straight on elevation. What we did and we worked out with Hank is we have a bunch of setback terraces and we tried to create more. Well, in every element, we will introduce green roofs and trees as well as, it's not the most obvious, but we've got elements here where we put some trellis so that vines can run up the side of the building, which, and other plantings that grow on that, which will allow one to pull the green through the entire height of the building and really start pulling the park into the building and vice versa, as well as taking into account, you know, just the carbon dioxide and sustainability and just bringing the trees into it and it's better environment for everybody. Hank, are you on the call here still that you could chime in for some of the conversations we've had on this? I believe I'm here. And I guess maybe he's not here. He's having.
Can you hear me? Oops. Hold on. How's that?
Yeah, we have you, Hank.
And you hearing?
Yes, we can hear you, Hank. Hank, we can hear you if you can hear me. All right, so we'll try to reach him on the side separately. But what we worked out with Hank is these series of terraces bringing up through the building to constantly integrate trees and as many street trees as we could plant on the streets, on the street wall as well, as well as these green vine elements that you build a trellis and then the plants from the terraces can grow up alongside the building and help us, you know, bring the green from the park across and tie it into the rest of the building and for all the people in the building and for the people at the park. And we're looking at also just sustainability elements. So we're talking about, you know, wearing items like obviously green roof, street trees.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or meeting number followed by.
Thermal envelope and mechanical systems, you know, retention of say stormwater to irrigate all of this green roofs that we have and other elements, as well as further research into, you know, looking at all the other options out there as they keep coming down to, you know, building systems and environment and sustainability of the project, you know, and bringing it into the park.
Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry. Hello?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, yes, um, yes. I accidentally disconnected my audio.
All right. So if you're able to now, Hank, I mean, I gave a brief summary, but I'd love your expertise to talk about sort of the green elements that we discussed and how we were going to integrate them into the building.
Yeah, it's a perfect opportunity to, with, with the setbacks of the building design that Richard and, and Sam's office has nicely generated here, the first thought was there's great opportunity to introduce a structured landscape at these levels that will be rather robust, given the size of the, the setbacks where utilizing state of the art living roof technology, building technology and, you know, native planting systems and, and water conservation irrigation systems. These living elements can really introduce a rather legible and, and, you know, highly proportioned landscape to the, the building as well as adding value certainly to the residents, both the ones that have immediate access to it on the, on the roof setbacks on their private terraces. And this, the, the presence of this plus the espalier vines climbing up the masonry portions of the base building. And then the third level being this continuous row of street trees, both along Dukes Avenue as well as Lorimer Street, yet being native and planted with the appropriate subsurface preparations, both drainage and engineered soils for sustainability. You're introducing this whole other layer of, of landscape that makes this transition to the adjoining park. And in this rendering, and as you say, that the size and scale of the tree shown in elevation would be essentially the, the size of the trees day one. Again, given the commitment of the appropriate subsurface preparation, which will be improving current growing conditions, which are none right now as a concrete side, typical concrete sidewalk, but again, utilizing the best practices of engineered soils within the, the streetscape and the public realm. There can then be great assurances that trees planted day one are going to have ultimately reach the scale of, of their species capability. So many of the trees and the scale, the trees that you currently experience within the abutting park then essentially leap over each of these streets and onto the immediate grounds of, of the building, which again, provides the building with a landscape setting versus a street setting.
Thank you, Hank. Richard, now we discussed previously the rest of the building. Should we can review it here or?
I, I think if you just, want to just briefly run through it. And I think we can just answer any direct, direct questions.
So Amanda, if you can go to the floor plans, we start on, there's a cellar which has some additional commercial space and storage and attended parking. And then we'll move up to the first floor where we have two additional retail spaces of different scales for different types of retail off the park, which helps keep, you know, everybody in the building and to have access to retail right where they're living as well as retail right off the park and the access to the parking garage. As we move up through the building to the next level, next slide, please, Amanda. We start, we have some additional residential amenities overlooking the park as well as one last commercial space. And if we can go to the next slide, we go to the third floor, we have some additional and we start with some of the residential units, which have good views. I know they, you can even see like even the unit in the back, although it seems like the stepchild in some of these units. And on the next floors, there's actually straight line views up, because it's centered in the street. So it has a long extended view, actually towards Manhattan Skyline. Amanda, if you can go to the next slide. We start with the residential floors, which are all large scale size units with all nice light and air. And then we start bringing in the green roofs on the fourth floor roof, well, the third floor roof on this floor. And then as we hit the successive floors moving up, they're not all fully illustrated here, but we would every setback, we would be adding additional green floors. So the sixth through eighth floor is a continuous floor plan with a mix of mostly one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom, with a couple of studios. And then we go to the ninth and 10th floor, which also have additional setback, which would be showing greens with the last few units that we have here. And that is essentially the summary of the building that we're looking at. It's a relatively simple building with a unit breakdown.
And I think with that, Amanda, if you just want to go to the last two slides, again, just to recap the AMIs and average rentals, the building would be intended to be at option one, 60% AMI with family sizes going through three bedrooms, so roughly one through four. You'd have median incomes, family incomes ranging from 50,000 to roughly 71,000 with the understanding that 10% of the building would be at 40% AMI deep affordability with family sizes, incomes ranging from 33,000 through 47,000. So you really get some meaningful affordability and you get some, you know, families who are able to take advantage of this and to, to really live in a building and to have units which would otherwise not be available to them. The next slide is similarly presents the rental rates, again, averaging a 60% AMI for 956 through 1650 for a three bedroom with 10% and 40% AMI, ranging from 598 per studio through 1,000 plus for a three bedroom. With that, Amanda, if you want to, you can end the presentation and chair and committee members, the entire applicant team can answer specific questions.
Hi, this is Del Teague. I have a question with the affordable unit. What is, what's the range of the AMI range for the affordable unit?
Amanda, if you want to throw the screen up one more time. Del, the, the, the affordable range is relatively set by MIH requirements. So as an example, Amanda, just slide up, if you had a building at option one, which would average 60% AMI, then, as an example, if you had, we call it, it's 19, call it 20 units to make it easy. If you had 50% of the units averaging 60% AMI and 25% of the units averaging 40% AMI, then you would have 25% of the units averaging 80% AMI. So in our example, you know, five units, 10 units would be at 60% AMI, five units would be at 40% AMI and five units would be at 80% AMI. That would be kind of a rough range for the, what you'd see as far as affordability for this building.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes.
I do. Okay. Who is asking to speak?
I, I have some questions. I know other people do too.
Okay, so Katie, why don't you start?
Okay. Actually, I'd like to make some recommendations. First of all, that there is a community benefits agreement, that's a binding agreement. In terms of the park, contribution to park, that it's assured within this agreement and the time you vote, that this will be a dedicate, that these funds will be dedicated to McCarran Park and that they will be additional funds and that they will be for additions to the park, not necessities for the park that would be there paid for anyway by parks. So that there are additional funds on top of the regular necessities. And next, in terms of the park contributions, that there is a mechanism for community input for those, whether it's through the community board, through meeting parks that sets up with the community, larger community through the community board, through North Brooklyn Parks Alliance, or all of the above, and that these are requirements. Um, next, that, okay, this is actually, the front on Lorimer was not actually Chicken Factory. I think this building on Dukes was, it was the Royal Lace Paperworks. So I would like to recommend that the sign, the copper sign, which is up there, be incorporated into the facade of the building. I would like to recommend that the architecture facade of the building mimics in some way the current architecture of the building. And then I would also like to recommend that some photos of, of the building and/or of the lace from that building and the lace printers be in the hallways or the lobby of that building. I think it would be a great addition and also it's incredibly important, I believe, for us to still feel the history of, of the place and of the past. And I am wondering here, if I have a question, did you reach out to the Park Luncheonettes for their input on this, the building, which is right at the corner?
Sure.
And also I'm wondering if actually CB1 reached out to them because they actually asked how, in a letter to the Land Use Committee, how they could participate in this.
So Katie, thank you for the, for the question and the comments. I think most recently, immediately prior to the full board, the Park Luncheonettes attorney, who is someone who we've known for, for a number of years, reached out to us and we had a conversation about the proposal. He, he thanked me for the additional information. There was no further conversation at that time, but I do know that, that from a legal standpoint, they had noticed and were aware of the, of the proposal. Also just to comment on, on your, the points that you made, I think they're great points. I, you know, I think the addition of, of funds to the park, you know, we're thrilled to take the input of the community. David made it known to me that having been on the park and enjoyed it for, literally for decades, that he would love to, you know, really engage and, and to do something which is going to have the most impact on the most people. I will also tell you, Katie, that as a matter of design, our initial iterations of this project had some of the facade treatment you mentioned, where we would incorporate that as some of the elements in the building. So again, as, as in prior communications with the board on the project, we're really happy to get that input and we're happy to engage the community board or subset thereof with regards both to facade treatment as well as to the contributions to the park. We think it could really be fantastic for.
Katie, I have, I have a question about what you're, what you're recommending.
Okay.
Now, the copper sign, can you be more specific about what, what copper sign you're talking about?
So if we see the facade that's presently there, up towards the top, there's a long band of green and it says the Royal Lace Paperworks on it. It's, it's really quite lovely. One of the letters is missing. I've noticed it for years. Yeah. And if you Google it, which I just did, you can get, there's some incredible history about that building. And the library has one archive, which is a scroll, probably a wooden or metal scroll that they used for making the lace. It's quite prominent, the, the sign is very prominent.
So the sign says Royal Lace Paperwork?
Royal Lace, L A C E.
Royal Lace.
Royal Lace Paperworks. It was a lace factory. Thanks for, thanks, Richard, for, you know, agreeing to, to, you know, look into those things.
May I say something? May I interrupt? I am the owner of the, of the property in question. May I, I, I just want to clarify. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Just to clarify, we don't have a lawyer. We heard about this. We saw this was coming up. We started looking into what this entails, how this affects us. And so one lawyer that we spoke to apparently took it upon himself to call Mr. Lobell and apparently say that he represents. and apparently say that he represents us. We do not have a lawyer, uh, sir. Um, we're here to listen and learn. Uh, we are respectful neighbors.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I am the owner from the, uh, from the corner. My name is Mary Kachulis. I grew up in that building, in the building in that corner. Park Luncheonette.
You mean the, where the luncheonette is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I, I, I just wanted to clarify that we have no lawyer. We're here to listen, just like everybody else, and hear what the presentation is.
All right. Now this, again, the sign is, it says Royal Lace. And what's the last word? Katie?
Royal, like king or queen. Royal Lace Paperworks.
Paper like P A P E R?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to Google it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the other thing, I'm not sure I understand what you mean when you're suggesting that the architecture should mimic more the, the current building. What, do you have any specific, uh, suggestions?
Um, well, if you look at that current building, um, which I can look at right now because I have a photo of it. Um, um, sorry. The, the current building has, um, you, you, you know, the, it has more detail than we often see in, it's actually subtle detail, but it's, it's lovely, um, like arches over the windows. Um, and, and it's got, uh, some kind of, uh, horizontal treatment and vertical treatment. Um, it has some setback of the facade. Um, it has a nice, uh, like topping on it, um, which I don't know if it's called like a crap, the cornice or something. Um, there's a little bit of a Greek cornice in there. Um, so it's, it's, it's details which mimicked some of the architectural, um, element, design elements of the original building. They're pretty simple, um, you know, it would be pretty simple to mimic.
Does the developer have any response to that?
Um, y- oh, I, I think, yeah, I, I'll answer and David, if you want to chime in, you can. But, um, but, um, I think that that would be a great idea. I mean, we, we, um, referenced some of those elements, uh, on the initial plans to city planning. Uh, and we're happy to, to kind of like revive those and consult with the, uh, Land Use Committee about adopting those. David, are you on?
Yes, I, I, hi everybody. Thank you for, for listening to us. Uh, we've been in the neighborhood for many, many, many years. And if you look on the, on the, on the, on the city's website, you could even see me taking off graffiti on the buildings on their website. I, I really care about the block and, and what, what everything looks like. As far as that sign, it's, it means a lot to us also because the original owners, their name is, if you look up, uh, you can look it up online, their name is Carfield. They happen to be related to us from way, way back. So this building was built, I think in 1933 or 1930, something like that. And then, uh, my wife's grandfather took over the building at that time. And they had, uh, it's, it's, you call it a feather factory. It's a processing plant. Uh, we, we supply feathers to, to the industry that make, uh, sofas and, uh, furniture and, and pillows and so on and so forth. And, um, so that sign, I, I know that sign and I always said, I'm going, I'm going to save that sign. So a hundred percent. And we care a lot about the park. I spend a lot of time, whenever I have free time, I'm in that park. And I know what has to be done to clean up that park. I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that park. And I want to keep the character of the building also, um, I want to keep that character. That's why we try to keep as much of the look of that building, um, the same way. Um, okay?
Thank you, David.
Richard, if I can just comment as the architect, the original intent when we started this project was actually to keep the buildings and the facades, but based on the structural condition as well as the floors, starting several feet above grade. We didn't have any essentially accessibility or handicapped access to the building. Um, the then follow-up intent was to make a base of the building that was masonry and hearken back to the intent of this building. So we are a hundred percent on board with keeping historical elements and the feel of the base and the, uh, manufacturing vibe that it gives off on the street wall.
Thanks, Sam.
I just have a question. So a lot, an awful lot of the building seems to be glass. So there would be enough, um, on the, on, on the, uh, lower levels to be able to do something like this and incorporate the, um, sense of, of the architecture of the current building?
Yes, um, right now, you know, it is masonry with large punch glass openings, but we would modify it to incorporate some more of these elements and, you know, leave space for the sign and, you know, enhance the cornice.
And what floors do you think you could do that?
Uh, the first through the third floors, which gives us approximately the same height as the existing building as it is now for the masonry, uh, street wall base. That's what we're going for on this design.
Okay. All right. Um, Corey, I think you had some, you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. Um, so first, I appreciate, uh, Richard and the applicant team, um, bringing up a lot of the questions that I think the community brought forth at the initial meeting. I, I definitely appreciate that. Um, I'm going to dovetail a little bit on what, uh, Del was just talking about in terms of contextuality. Um, because I think the first three floors is certainly, you know, it's good to obviously keep the integrity and, and that's a really beautiful building. So I think when you consider Williamsburg's history, I think it is important to do what you can, um, to maintain that. But, you know, right now, the amount of glass on top of it is, is kind of lopsided from, from my view. Um, and I think it's two things. So it's, one, in terms of it not being contextual, it's not contextual with the building it's on top of. Um, nor is it, you know, if you take 860 Lorimer, which is a new rental building just next door, um, they seem to actually be contextual with 840 Lorimer and, and honor, um, I think, the manufacturing and, and the brick facade. Um, so I would ask if the upper floors could also be made, um, brick. Um, and, you know, I think in addition to that, there's a consideration of environmental concerns because, you know, I live in a glass building personally. Um, and I know that, you know, I think many of us are aware that, you know, they're, uh, not particularly energy efficient. Um, I think there are actually some cities in Europe that have considered banning them. So while I, I do appreciate the trees that you, you know, are, are suggesting to put on the setbacks, I think that that's a nice, um, aesthetic and, and, um, kind of nod to the park that it is in front of it. I don't think it actually really makes an environmental impact. So, you know, my suggestion to the applicant team is if you could do, uh, a brick facade with large glass windows, because that would be more energy efficient and would fit, I think, the context of the site better.
Yeah, so Sam, I'll start and then maybe you can talk a little bit from, from the architecture standpoint. Um, so, uh, you know, Corey, I, I think that, um, we, we want to make sure we can deliver on what we say we're going to deliver on and, and I don't want to, to say things, I don't want to offer things we can't deliver on. So that, that, that's kind of the baseline. And, and the reason that I say that is because I think that there were specific, um, choices that were made with regards to, uh, utilization materials on the ground floors and, and through, and then using, you know, glass and, and other aspects above. I think part of that was around not wanting to create like a, a kind of a massive feel, uh, uh, fronting on the park over here. Like some of it was just, if you take a look at some of the renderings, it was to make it purposefully lighter on the upper stories. The, the, uh, brickwork and such and incorporating those elements on the ground three floors, which also, uh, with regards to the uses on those floors is the intended uses for commercial and retail use on the ground floor and, and office. It like kind of hearkens back to, um, you know, manufacturing, commercial work buildings and such. And then the glass floors are intended to be, um, for the residential uses. So, um, without getting, without going into like the, the, you know, going deep into architectural design in this conversation necessarily. I mean, I'd let Sam talk to that a little bit and I'd love for, um, for a further conversation and even if it's a discussion in the, um, in the, in the, in the resolutions about moving forward, how there'll be a conversation about designing the building as this gets closer, hopefully to, to, um, to eventually being developed. Like I, I'd welcome that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we just don't turn around and say, sure, we'll make the whole thing brick when, when some of the decisions around that may be, uh, too challenging. Uh, Sam, could you speak to that?
Uh, sure, Richard. And you did, you did say it quite well and thank you for the question. Um, the design intent was, as Richard described, to keep the base of the building, uh, as, as is in the scale of the neighborhood and what it was right now, to keep that feel of the original building, which as I mentioned earlier, we started actually with the intent to keep the original building and then essentially put a floating element in the cloud so that it disappears as much as possible. We had actually originally wanted to even push the building further back on Lorimer, um, from the main facade, but we were held back by the, uh, street roll requirements, which required us to actually push the residential portion, uh, forward. Our intent was to actually push it back it, so that way we had the two elements. We had the base building, which hearkened back to the history of the building and then the element that was attempting to disappear into the clouds further up, you know, setback from the street. And so that is how, what we were going for here, to try to almost make it not be dominant in this massive element sitting on top of the park.
I, um, I appreciate that explanation and I, I do, you know, I do recognize that glass buildings are much less heavy in, in some regards. Um, but I do think here that the glass sticks out more so than it, you know, would blend into the clouds, just as a personal opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board, how they feel, but just to, you know, I appreciate it, but I'm not sure I see it.
So, uh, Steve, he's got your hand up. Steve Chesler.
And, uh, thanks, Richard, and everyone for the presentation. Yeah, I, um, yeah, I guess I, my whole thing, I'm, I'm struggling, you know, with the, the size of the building and the architecture. You know, this isn't 103 Lee that's looking out on, you know, on Expressway. Um, it's, you know, we have this amazing historic park, you know, with the, you know, um, you know, amazing canopy trees. You know, it's just, you know, we're our neighborhood and so many others are starving for quality, you know, open space, um, where we, you know, for health and wellbeing. And just to, it's maybe when you, when you leave the park or you're in the park, just to be confronted with that glass is just, it's, it's kind of shocking. And then also we're just so used to this historical fabric that is adjacent to and behind it with all Italian eight buildings on Manhattan Avenue and along Lorimer and beyond. I know some of that's changing drastically, which is horrible. Um, and I just feel like it's kind of a false, I don't say equivalent or connection to the, um, you know, over a hundred foot tall buildings that are around the peripheral park. Uh, so many folks can correct me if wrong, but I believe some of those were, they got away with that height because they, they grandfathered in the old zoning rules, um, that, uh, because the new rules would have prohibited them building so tall. Um, that, you know, we, you know, the community with city planning for like two years, came up with this, with these designations to protect the park, to create a contextual environment that's, you know, that's not oppressive that we can live in. And, and I could just, you know, I live on Manhattan, on the north end of Manhattan Avenue and I, there's must be like a dozen examples from Driggs all the way to near Newtown Creek and on Lorimer and Callier, where developers are hearing to the R six zoning, where they're building six stories or two, two additional stories with affordable housing. And, you know, they're, they're building viable projects. I've been getting, you know, the return on investment that is, um, you know, um, amenable to them. So I'm just trying to, you know, understand what, you know, why this, you know, need this upzone in this project here. Um, you know, I'm, I know, I'm, I'm, everyone knows I'm a major parks guy in the neighborhood. So I, you know, I feel very sensitive and strongly about protecting it and, um, and like I said, as a right, you know, I don't, still don't know where you're getting, getting this, uh, nine stories from. Um, I feel like with, um, with, you know, if you did a residential building, it's, it's six to eight. Um, and why that wouldn't be adequate, um, concerning all the, all the other, you know, nearby properties. Um, so yeah. And I, I just want to just piggyback on Corey saying that it would, would be easier to, um, to absorb if it was, it was all brick, you know, and mimicking what 860 did, I think was really great. Um, something along those lines. But again, it's just, it's like two buildings, you know, there's the brick on the bottom that you designed and then this drastic kind of, um, mirror.
So, um, Steve, thank you for the comment, uh, at, at the committee, at this committee as well as at the full board, which kind of informed some of the, um, work that we were doing around this. So, um, first of all, you know, I just want to express, uh, again gratitude for this conversation. The, the as a right, uh, it's, it's, it just doesn't really offer anybody anything. You know, it really is, is from a use standpoint, it is, it's, you know, it's a lot of doctor's offices and reduced residential, but also seven affordable units. So, um, you, you know, there's, there's a chance here to actually produce something which everyone can be proud of. And, uh, you know, I'm listening to the comments with regards to the facade treatment, um, which is also important to note because in an as a right context, nobody on this call gets to, gets to, you know, including us, get to talk about this. I mean, it basically goes into Department of Buildings as a right and it just ends up being, you know, whatever horrible building they can build, you know, as much as they can build. So thank you for that. Uh, I, I'm, you know, I hear what you're saying with regards to, um, uh, to the, to the facade treatment and the nature of the building going on. Um, you know, again, like I'm going to defer a little bit to David, the, you know, the applicant as well as Sam, the architect, uh, and, and talk about that a little bit. I mean, I know, so I know that, that you and Corey have weighed in as far as the design treatment. Um, I don't know where everyone else stands on this, but, you know, that's one of the reasons I'm kind of offering that on a going forward basis. Maybe we like all sit down and talk about this separately. I mean, to, I don't know enough to say like, you know, to, 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 again, represent whether or not uh, it works as, as using brick treatment on the, on the facade all the way up. It might, like, I think that that's, you know, it's again, something that David and Sam can speak to. But, um, but I do know that, you know, on, on a separate note, uh, Sam and I have worked together for years on many projects and Richard Beenenfeld, um, you know, I, I encourage you to take a look at their website and their materials. Like bar none, there are some of the most creative architects that I've worked with and I just am very proud to be associated with them. We have not done ULEFs together in CB1, but like, uh, I'm confident that, that they can get the job done. And I'm confident that, that the community board weighs in and says to, to, you know, to the person, we want to make changes here and we find it more amenable to make the building more like this, that they can work that out. And, and so Sam and David, I mean, this is your forum if you want to speak to that.
Why don't we, uh, let Sante speak because he's probably going to speak on some of the same, uh, some of the same things here, at, at least I'm guessing that. So before you address, uh, what we've talked about so far with the architecture, Sante, do your comments have, are, are your comments related to what we've, we've been talking about here?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to, um, follow up a little bit on what, um, Corey and Steve said. And also what I said, uh, myself, I, I believe giving input, uh, uh, again, I'm going to talk again about vertical force, but I'm gonna go and tap precisely, why do we have vertical force? One is that we have an issue and Corey has said that. And the issue is like mineral building. Mineral building means, uh, mineral facades, of which in New York, never, in this last 15 years, never, I believe we are kind of top on the planet, mineral fac- asset. Good for environment. Uh, we can, you know, the environmental sustainable measure of, to contain the use of energy, but the more we have this mineral transparent facade, uh, is kind of, is always going to be very difficult to counteract that effect. Uh, I believe a little bit my input of vertical force at the public hearing, I see as being translated into greenery. I don't know, I was riding the word, I heard the landscape, living roof. Uh, I believe the input was that vertical force is an architectural topology. I know it seems salient to talk to this about today, but we may be able to make the future of that. It's an architectural system. You know, I saw the structure, there were some, uh, uh, drawings that you showed. The building is still the same building. We have taken some- We have taken some plant exactly what that's what I believe the applicant has proposed. It's like some added landscape, the, the street itself, there were supposed to be trees, should be tree anyway. We add few tree, we're talking about, is this applicant willing? Because the scale, the mass, the, the glass facet, they all still can assist there, but maybe what we can give back to the community, it's an unprecedented, uh, green system. There is vertical force, it cannot be translated in any other way, not through greenery. You know, is the applicant willing to work with a new architectural topology? They can only benefit the community, can become a model. And again, to what Steve was saying, whatever happened around, honestly, I wasn't part of this community board. I never felt that all the big scale building, uh, where, and again, you know, I, I'm an art, you know, I can only support architecture, and I am a contextualist many times, but I don't want to be a stream, you know, I wish this building could be preserved. I believe if there, if there are possibility to preserve the facade, integrate it, of course, it's an added cost, and I understand, maybe that's not what we're doing. But I will willing to make a difference, because when we talk vertical forest, we're talking about new technological system and new architectural topology. You had to build a building within mind the structure, you know, water recycling, CO two, you know, I don't see that here, you know, it should be a hundred pages of presentation. We wanted to have a response about making the building green as it is intended for vertical forest. And something else for our committee, and probably you remember.
Wait, before you go further, wait, wait, Mr. Sante, if you, you're suggesting vertical forest, but are you saying that i- if they were going to do that, you would find the, 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 uh, glass top of this building to be possible?
Let's say, let's make it simple, because I don't want to make a presentation myself. And, you know, it would be, I have image, I'll show you. But the building itself in vertical forest, at first, it's a building as engineer, and, and there is concrete, actually, there even remedy in the way concrete is used there, that actually can be, uh, more environmentally friendly, but I don't want to get into that. You know, this should be up to the architect to research. Uh, but the structure itself is designed, it's a complex system. It's designed together, you know, with a lot of different expertise, from engineering, architecture, environmentalist, and, and, you know, botanist. And so if there is a variety, the species are selected so they can be sustainable. They can continue to grow for years. There is a plan, how the building is maintained, how the water is recycled, how the lights come through, what kind of birds they're going to be and, and nest on those tree. What kind of insect are going to go and nest on those bushes? It's not just landscape, this is a, 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 a complex system. And to tell you more, Dale, we know that, uh, our Brooklyn Deputy Director of City Planning, Alex Sommer, and I believe the office, I don't know if it was Marie or Jerry, when I mentioned vertical forest for the first time, they've asked if what I was mentioning was something was coming out, who knows from where, from my madness. And I believe Alex Sommer has replied, said that actually was fortunate enough to go in Milan. Uh, that time, I believe in Milan was the first project of vertical forest happened there. Now they happen all over the world, you know, some I said before, even affordable house. And he said he was fortunate enough to go in Milan and to see that in person, and that there was nothing in the rule, in the laws that would have prevent for us to recommend vertical forest in New York.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to have to stop you, because we, we have to try to finish by nine o'clock, and I'm sure others are going to need discussion on this. And I just want to remind you that several of your committee members, um, have strongly voiced opposition to the, to the juxtaposition of the first couple of floors with that glass on the top. So this is something that, you know, I think we're not, everybody is not necessarily, uh, in line here. So, um, this is something that the commi- committee will have to discuss.
Okay, I don't want to, I just want to say, if we want to talk about, uh, having a building in this scale, in this mass, and maybe with that glass, if it is become a vertical forest as a new generation of urban buildings, they are completely covered with leaves and trees, completely, not a roof, because a roof, it's easy to do, and it becomes a system, I don't know, personally, because it will be unprecedented i- in our community next to a park, and it can be quantified, because there is a quantification that will say, this is the equal, equal five acres of, of parts, of plants, or trees. I believe it would be a great contribution, it would be unprecedented, and hopefully it could be the future for us to really envision building to be green as much as we're possible.
Okay, so Trina, um, you, you have your hand up, and then Keith, your hand is up.
Okay, first I want to just echo what, um, Corey and Steve said about, um, possibly continuing the masonry throughout the whole building and not having the two different buildings, basically. And also, I want to echo what, um, Katie had said about just you trying to use as much of the, or not use as much, to echo as much of the, um, original facade in the, the, the new building as, just due to the richness of the design. There are some things that I, I don't quite understand. I want to understand too, what city planning, what buildings besides the footprint of this building, city planning is throwing into the, the rezoning. And so I'd like to look at that again. And I'd also like to really understand how much money there, there, we're talking, when we're talking about, um, contributing to the park. Because there, there's, I mean, we all contribute to the park, but I would, how, I just, not, not dollars, not the, the exact amount, but just kind of a, um, a ballpark figure about what the, what the owner is willing to put towards the park. And, and then also, I want to understand the view of the, the apartments in the back, because you've got the, the apartments that face the park on two sides, and then there's a whole, whole set of apartments that face the back of the building. And you had said that there is a view on those that you see the skyline, but if city planning continues to rezone the way this building would be rezoned, will that view go away? And so those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Trina. So, so I've got three basic issues. The one was a, uh, further affirmation that, uh, it would be, uh, better to continue the masonry above, uh, rather than go, a- and, and in separate communications with, with David, um, this is something that he is definitely open to. So, so I think that, yeah, I mean, I know we're having that conversation right now, but like, but I, I understand what everyone's saying, and, and Sam, again, I think, you know, eventually you can weigh in, but I think that, um, you know, that, that we would, we would, you know, definitely want to talk about incorporating additional masonry above the, above the first three stories.
Not additional masonry, but making the building into a masonry building.
Understood. Well, I, right, but that's the part where I can't, just being the lawyer, I just.
Of course, yeah.
So, so, yes, I understand that's the, that's the way that the committee feels. Um, Santo, uh, you know, at some point, I'm going to bring you a vertical forest building, and we're going to, it's going to be fantastic. Uh, I do know that, that, uh, having Hank on board here was a real benefit to us, because he's, you know, he's, uh, he's very accomplished at, at, at landscape architecture, and as well as, as, um, as making buildings more green. So, so I know that we didn't, you know, it doesn't look like we're there yet, but I do want to tell you that it was not just cosmetic what we offered here, that I know that there was serious conversations between Hank's office and between Richard and Sam about, about how to really kind of make this a more sustainable building in terms of greenery, in terms of plantings and such. It's, it's, it exceeds anything or ninety-five percent of the buildings that we've worked on. So again, like, you know, I want to tell you, we're thinking about it, and even if we're not all the way there right now, we're trying to go towards that direction. And, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Alex Sommer and the Brooklyn office, and, and I've looked at the buildings in, in Milan and looked at pictures of them. And yeah, it's, it would be something to do, but, but I want to just tell you, we're thinking about it. With regards to the contribution to the park, um, I, I have had those initial conversations with, um, you know, with, with, um, um, I'm sorry, I forgot, uh, with, with.
Mary Salig.
Sorry?
Mary Salig.
Mary Salig, I've heard, is like constantly in my head. So with Mary, uh, who was kind enough to talk to me, uh, over the last week and including today. Um, there's no number yet. Um, you know, part of it was not to just be reflexive and to say, like, okay, what's really, what's, what are the needs here, and what can we really fund? Um, but, but, um, but yeah, I mean, like, to the extent that the committee comes out with a number or consults with Parks and comes out with a number, the idea here was, the best kind of projects, as far as I'm concerned, they don't just, you know, they, they basically try to address issues that arise from the building. And so to the extent that you've got a building now on the park, again, there's an as of right option, we know it's not a good option for anybody, but to the extent that this now will be a building on the park, we want to be part of the park. And so, yes, um, you know, they'll, it's, the only thing I know is that it's going to be a material donation. Parks has not come out with a number yet. I know that, uh, Mary, uh, was speaking to her, to the director of the, of, um, you know, Brooklyn Director of Parks, and they were going to come back to us and give us more of a number. So, to the extent that, you know, the community board has recommendations, we'd love to hear them, but I just don't know a number yet, but I know it's material. Uh, and then to the extent of the views of the buildings in the rear, like, Sam, can you talk a little bit about, about massing a little bit? And what's the intention as far as what they would look out onto?
Sure. So, the, the benefit of the fact that this building does run lengthwise across Driggs quite a bit, is that it sits in the rear yards of most of those buildings. So even if there is development, and yes, on the opposite end, uh, I believe it's pretty far away, somebody could build something substantial, but those units would have a pretty long stretch of open space, which would give them potentially, yes, a nice skyline. I can't completely define how much it could get blocked, but they do have, it's not just a thirty foot wall, because you're sitting on rear yards of buildings. So, and all of those rear yards is thirty feet on each side, so it's a minimum of a sixty foot space running the length of the block, which will leave quite a bit of open space and light and air for those units as well.
Keith Berger, you, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to echo, um, what, what other board members said in terms of trying to continue the, the masonry facade as opposed to the, the glass. Um, you know, I think sometimes, you know, glass sounds better, but I think it really does look out of context in this, in this area. Uh, with respect to parks, you know, look, I, I hear what you're saying about a substantial contribution. What I'd like to, to ask and at least have, and contemplate, you know, as we, this is something I think about when I think about community benefit beyond the affordable housing, which I do, I do obviously appreciate and, and think we need. Um, you, you know, is that, i- is this meant to be a one-time contribution? Or is the developer thinking of more of a long-term commitment? I mean, this building is going to be here for, for a very, very long time. Um, you know, and, and whether we like it or not, whether it should be this way or not, parks are, are underfunded, their budgets are underfunded. As someone who lives in a building that contributes to the park space outside their building every year, it's still not good enough. And, you know, I, I think that, uh, the builder ought to consider a annual, uh, effort and contribution. I appreciate that contribution would have to be kind of proportional to the size of the building. I'm not expecting them to, you know, prop up this park in a way that wouldn't require public funding, but, um, you know, in, you know, are, are, are you considering, you know, a more long-term commitment as opposed to a one-time donation, just to get a rezoning done?
Yeah, no, thank you, Keith. Uh, in, in, in some prior applications, although nothing's been as extensive as this as far as potential contribution, uh, the, the, the tie-in was basically, okay, you, you know, development happens, the building gets CO'd, the initial contribution starts then, and then there's a, 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 let's call it an annuity for a period of years. So it's not like, you know, like, just the guy writes a check and then takes off. It's more like, you know, more like sustainability for, for, um, you know, for a longer time. Um, but that, that was kind of what was contemplated.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Well, I'd like to weigh in on the facade, if I could. Is that okay?
Yeah. Is there anyone else who's had, has their hand raised who hasn't spoken at all? So see, uh, Steve, I think you have your hand up again. I don't see anyone else. Okay, Katie, go ahead.
I disagree with continuing the brick all the way up as is at the bottom three floors. I think it would be too monolithic and too heavy. I like the idea of having a separation between the two, uh, so that you really do get a feel of that original height and that it continues to the left and right, uh, somewhat. So, but that said, um, I don't really mind the all glass. I feel like it does, uh, kind of, uh, disappear into the sky, perhaps. But that said, um, because others feel like it doesn't work, and that can be very much true, um, it seems like perhaps it might be good to have, uh, some brick incorporated, but that it does have a lighter feel than the ground floor. I don't like it all brick, um, going up. It's just too, too heavy and too much of a monolith to me. And I just also like to say about the green vertical forest, I don't feel, um, the vertical forest, I don't feel capable of myself recommending that, because I do not really know, uh, much about it, and I, or how sustainable it is, how well it works, what it really looks like.
Katie, I, I think we've understood that at this point, and at this stage, we're not in a position to really push for that. I think at this point, what I'm hearing is that, um, a number of, uh, a, a number of people on the, uh, on the committee feel, do not like the stark, uh, you know, uh, line between the first couple of floors and then that, the, the all glass above that. So my sense, uh, as we talk about this after the presentation is over, when we're going to go into our discussion, is we will probably try to come to some kind of a compromise on that. So I don't, I'm, I, I really apologize for having to cut things short, but we are limited, and I do want to make sure we have a chance to have a constructive, uh, discussion among ourselves.
We are able to go till ten if need be, correct? Now?
I, yes, if, if need be, if need be.
And thank you for that, Dale.
Meaning that we, you know, we, we, we shouldn't, uh, abuse this, because it's only in, uh, special circumstances we're supposed to go to ten. Um, and also, let's face it, the, the staff is, is, has to sit at the, at the community board there at the office. So let's try to, you know, keep it as, um, let's keep our, our remarks as, as tight as possible.
Um, you know, I, I agree with you, Dale. I agree with you, let's be as concise as possible, but let's not, uh, uh, keep people from speaking who need to, because it is a public.
Katie, have I ever done that? Have I ever, ever done that in your experience? I, I don't think so, it's not my, it's not my way.
Thank you. Yes, you're right, you're right.
Let's not ramble, and let's just, you know, be as, as concise as we can be, because I want to have a discussion among.
I agree.
Among the committee members.
Yes, thank you, I agree. Thank you, Dale.
Thanks. So, uh, Steve, I think I saw your name up again, uh, your hand up again, I don't know.
Yes, yeah, I did, thank you, Dale. Um, I think what, you know, Sante talked about with the vertical forest is, is really important. Because it's, I think, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're dealing with the aesthetics and the impact of this design and the size of this building on the park, but we can't forget about the climate crisis that we're in the midst of, that's getting worse. And we can't just keep kicking things down the can, you know, the can down the road with, um, how these buildings are constructed. And, you know, we just, you know, uh, what, what's going on at Broadway Triangle with that coalition is amazing that they're doing the entire complex passive house, solar. Um, so I think we really need to push here for the same. Um, I know that, you know, River Ring, I don't know if you guys heard, but they're, they're going all electric in those two massive towers. They're doing wastewater mitigation. I just heard one Java, which is also going to be a massive tower, is also going all electric. So I'd like to push for those initiatives. Um, well, you know, whatever resolution we ended up going with, that, um, to go above and beyond what the, you know, the city and state laws are, that they, you know, consider going all electric however they can with whatever renewable technologies. And I would say, even, you know, I'm still getting up to speed about vertical forest, but I feel like aesthetically, and even with an anecdotal, um, knowledge of it, I feel like it would be, I think, a viable design alternative in terms of, um, being sort of a, a, you know, kind of visceral kind of bridge between, you know, the neighborhood behind it and a tree-lined Lorimer Street and, and the park. And, um, and so, I don't know, I, I would consider that as, as a condition along with some of these other things with, um, or what, you know, I would suggest. And like at least, at least six to eight stories of masonry. That's what I, I would be put out there for our discussion. Thanks for the ex, for the additional comment.
Well, can I respond to you? Uh, thank you, Steve, for saying that. But I'd love to respond to you, because, and I'd love to respond to anybody if you didn't read enough, because a, a vertical forest is not my invention. The vertical forest is a system that has been awarded as one of the best. building, you know, different, when it was the first one. The entire planet is inviting Boeri, but, uh, Boeri, you want to spread this as a topology other could embrace. Okay? So when we say that we are not ready, I don't know what that means because you can read extensively for years if you want about the system, about the vertical force. Any architect, any engineer that is up to time will really know and will embrace that. Now, what, what are we questioning? Even Alex Somer says, hey, I've been there. There is nothing can stop you. And we are talking about a little bit of brick or, uh, or, uh, maybe some glass up there. Yes, can be the brick, but first has to be the system, which as Steve said, is an environmental issue. It's an aesthetic issue. And I don't see why we shouldn't recommend it. We've recommended before. There is even more reason why we should use this language. And we should have other, we should have the borough president, we should have the mayor, and, and these is things that together with the many other, we had to come to legislation of a certain point. Why were we rejecting the idea? There's nothing against the brick or anything else. Let's integrate the word vertical forest. It's a topology. It's a system. It's an architectural device. This is the future. So.
So I'm saying, I, I, I don't.
Doesn't mean enough to me.
I don't think anyone has rejected the idea. If, i- it certainly can be a recommendation, whether the committee wants to have it as an, as a requirement. I don't know that, 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 I'm not hearing that, but we'll have a discussion. But I haven't heard anybody, uh, uh, rejecting the, our, our idea of a vertical forest. And I again say to you, Sante, you have, I believe you have, you may have knowledge of people who have enough, um, interest and knowledge of a vertical forest that maybe they can come and enlighten the, the, the board members so that more people will feel more familiar with, with the idea of a vertical forest. But.
Absolutely, Del. I said to you, I, I could invite here Boeri, I could invite here other, but normally, I, to be honest, they're all two-way up. Uh, if we want to organize some forum bigger, uh, with the city, with the borough president, I could. I have connection with the,
Okay.
You know, with the Italian consulate, but it's not about that. It's about recognizing, we don't need to invite anybody to talk about this. It's already, uh, uh, this is an academic conversation. Already this, this conversation happened at Columbia University.
Don, thank you've taken up enough on this, I think. We, I hear it. We all hear you. And we can discuss it at the, we're going to have hopefully enough time for a discussion among the committee members. I haven't heard anyone reject recommending the, the virtual forest. I think the, the question is, do we recommend it? Or do we, you know, uh, is it a condition? So this, let us, I want to make sure we have enough time. Now I see Crystal, I see a, a hand here. I don't know who Crystal is.
I'm not a community board member. I requested to speak. I'm asking if I'm going to get that opportunity.
Yes, you can speak. Why don't you speak now?
You want me to do it now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Hi, my name is Crystal. Thank you for this time. I live across the street on the Manhattan Avenue side of this, uh, development site. So I'm just going to jump right in. Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, we can hear you. Okay. So the development's a complete eyesore, not in line with the architecture and size of buildings in the surrounding area. Eight forty Lorimer is essentially designed to be a fishbowl or glass display case, ostentatiously displaying wealth, materialism, and the illusion of luxury completely out of reach for working-class residents. Nineteen, quote, affordable units are not enough. The design serves no purpose to the community, but to lure wealthier non-locals to the gentrified area to continue displacement. The development drives up already soaring rent prices that encourage landlords to commit rent fraud schemes on rent-regulated units, displace non-rent regulated tenants because they can with the outrageous precedent these new developments set in rent, and sell their buildings to other corporate real estate companies that have zero interest in investment in the wellbeing, and investment in the wellbeing of the community and its locals. A one-bedroom, one-bathroom luxury apartment at luxury building, the Grand McCarron, right next door to eight forty, was listed for $4,500. Two bedrooms start at over $6,000 a month. The development will also block, completely block the sun for buildings on Manhattan Avenue. I'm looking at the existing building right now. It'll completely block any and all sunlight my and many other apartments currently receive. I've lived here for 15 years. I recently lost my view of the Empire State Building thanks to the development of another luxury building. The new developments in the neighborhood have driven up the cost of living here, not just in rent, but in recreational activities. For example, french fries are now $8 on average. A cup of tea is $4.50 on average. A cookie is easily $5. The aver- average lunch will cost you a minimum of $20 if you're lucky, with the accept, expectation to tip generously to compensate for the lack of fair wages paid to employees, all because rents are soaring and only continuing to go up. We must not continue to let this housing and rent crisis kill small businesses and displaced locals. Residents around this lot have recently had to suffer and endure years of full demolition and new development construction from the erection of luxury buildings like the Grand McCarron next door, four other brand-new buildings on this block, and a full gut renovation and addition of a penthouse to 574 Manhattan Avenue. The construction disturbs the existing and surrounding foundations, bringing up mice and water bug infestations to existing nearby residences and, and business buildings. The construction noise also severely diminishes the quality of life of neighbors. The lot landowner has proven that he does not care about our community. He refused to renew the lease for bar matchless and affordable non-pompous, timeless and historic watering hole for Greenpointers and a safe haven for performing artists of all kinds, serving the community for 15 years. Had they cared about our community and its residents at all, a compromise could have been reached with matchless, including, uh, being included in the new development. Instead, the lot and that iconic and once lively corner has set empty for over the past four years. The vacancy of such a treasured local business in the area is hit, is a hit that is still felt to this day, especially in the summer months. Whatever corporate business or office taking its place will never be able to capture the local spirit that matchless provided our community with. A mom-and-pop local business will never be able to afford rent in one of the planned retail spaces while still being able to cover overhead costs and responsible and fair employees', uh, wages. Take a look at Manhattan Avenue, that, that side of the lot. The block is full of retail vacancies that were there before the pandemic. We don't need more unaffordable retail space. Uh, I'm almost done. Both Greenpoint and Williamsburg already suffer from a lack of resources the city is able to provide due to overcrowding, both on the sidewalks, uh, on the G train with parking, trash cleanup, park space in the warm months. We don't need, want, and cannot afford any more luxury spaces to be erected to sit empty. We need and want more community space, green space, equity, respectfully-designed residential buildings, real affordable housing, an increase of accessible and reliable resources and city services to the community, a transition to renewable energy, and a preservation of existing small and local businesses and rent-regulated units. Not the encouragement and rewarding of blinding, high-rise luxury developments displacing those of us left here. The design of this development is embarrassingly out of touch, self-serving, and full of greed. Thank you so much for this time.
Yeah, thank you. I, I also want, I'm wondering if, uh, the owner of the building with the luncheonette has anything to, uh, that she wants to say.
Hi, uh, it's Mary Cachules. Uh, we're here to listen and learn. Um, we, we appreciate the comments that are coming up. Um, we trust that, you know, the, the committee is, is going to, um, has a lot more experience than I have in this. So, um, the concerns that we would have, I think, have, uh, have been mentioned. And, um, you know, we, we hope for, um, the best, uh, development of that corner. Um, we welcome development. It's part of what we need to do for, uh, our community. Uh, but, uh, you know, it, it has to be a respectful way that does address the needs of the area. Uh, and so a lot of these have been raised. So we, we thank you for the opportunity. Um, this is not an area of expertise that we have. Um, and we appreciate, uh, the attention that people are giving to this project. That's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Um, I, I think, uh, this is, I think we've come to the time now where the committee can, we can now discuss among ourselves whether we want to, um, vote to, uh, to, uh, approve the application with conditions, all the various conditions I've been hearing, whether we want to deny it, um, because of certain conditions. And, um, unless the developer has something you want to add, I, I would move on to the committee's discussion.
Del, can I, one, one question that I did ask was what, besides the luncheonette and the footprint of the building itself, is the planning, including in the rezoning?
Right. So, um, just, just to, um, to summarize that, there's the luncheonette, there's the building itself, and then there's, um, two buildings, uh, fronting on Manhattan Avenue. Um, so basically, city planning, uh, chooses a uniform boundary and, and, you know, in accordance with the applicant, basically looks at the conditions, uh, that are pervasive for that entire block front. So, um, here it would be four lots. Uh, you can take a look, uh, it kind of evens out the district boundary. Uh, of course, you know, the community board, as, as have other community boards, issues recommendations with regards to whether or not they want other lots included, et cetera. But right now it includes, uh, those four lots which, uh, front, um, on Driggs. And then the, the, I'm sorry, did you, did you get that? It's, it's, um, it's basically there's the, the lot itself, the luncheonette, and then, uh, the two lots immediately to the east of this. I, you're muted. You're muted. Trina, you're muted.
On Manhattan, basically it creates a rectangle, including Manhattan and the side of Driggs.
Correct. Tropisoid, but yeah.
Right. And Manhattan, that, that line of buildings is right now, what, six stories, five stories?
Um, there's a, there, this would include a three and four-story building behind the building.
Right.
Um, I'd also just add, uh, Del, because you asked whether or not we had any more comments, but, um, you know, uh, understanding that, um, the, the building next door, from what I understand from this typical occupancy is roughly 43 units, uh, of luxury housing. Uh, and that the as-of-right building here would have, uh, seven units of affordability. The proposal right now would have 19 units of affordable housing. Uh, I, I'm just, I'm just weighing in with regards to statements about displacement because, um, there's, there's no actual residence in any, in the buildings here so that you're not looking at anyone leaving for that reason. And as far as average cost of rentals, uh, I think it's rare to get a building sitting on the park or even in this area where, where, um, you're going to be able to have families come in, uh, and, and people with, let's say, two people and a kid who can rent a two-bedroom for $1,000. I just don't think that happens. So I kind of reject the narrative with regards to luxury housing. Uh, the purpose of the mandatory inclusionary housing, uh, initiative was specifically to create 25 to 30% affordability in these buildings. That does so here, you don't have someone who's coming in, buying a property and, 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 and developing. You have somebody who's been here for decades. So we thank you for your opportunity to speak. And, and again, um, we hope the, the committee can support this, uh, the, uh, application.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so let's now speak to our, our, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Michael?
Yeah, I just have one sort of observation. Looking at least what I can gather from Google Maps, those two lots that they're referring to that are not part of this development or the luncheonette, one of them looks like a vacant building right on the park. And the other one looks to me, I actually know it because it's a, it's a hair salon that is a, uh, that I, I'm familiar with. But that looks to me like a less than six-family building. So both of those could very easily become another large building like this from what I can ascertain. So I just thought I'd point that out.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So.
Can I start with some recommendations? Uh, Del, is that appropriate?
Does anyone have, um, sorry, why not? Why not? We have to start somewhere, yes?
I'll just jump in. Um.
Go right ahead.
I want to just, uh, say I love, uh, what Crystal had to say. Um, uh, um, however, that said, we are between an as-of-right or this rezoning. The rezoning brings more affordable housing and I am, and, and this is just the lay of the land. Um, and so I would be more in favor of that. That said, I believe that there should be community benefits agreement as part of this. It's one of the first times that we've done it. I guess CB6 does it also. This is something which, um, uh, Lincoln Ressler had actually mentioned, so he would know more about this mechanism. Um, I would say as a recommendation that they bring back matchless and that, uh, local, that there's, uh, community based.
We know that matchless actually wants to come back?
I don't know. I don't know.
They don't own that bill, that property, is that correct, Richard? They're just rezoning that, that's getting rezoned, but.
That's correct.
They don't own that. Okay, very good. All right. I got, okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, businesses that are there are community-based in some way that they have roots in the community because that makes them better and, and stronger and actually more popular. Um, and also they, that's more in the nature of this, uh, community to have that. I would recommend as a condition, um, that the, uh, also that there be affordable retail space as condition, uh, dedicated and additional funds to the park. Um, and that we know, uh, okay, um, and that perhaps the park, for the park luncheonette, if that's going, that there'd be an escrow fund for construction mitigation or something like that. I'm just throwing that in. Um, also as condition that there's some sort of compromise with the upper floors, um, reflect, uh, you know, the comments tonight, uh, and that the real lace paper sign is, uh, is, uh, on the facade and that the design mimics, uh, that it's not just brick, but the design elements also mimic, um, the, not that, not exactly, but mimic what is there now in the design. Um, and I'm sure I missed some other things that people said, so, uh, but that's all I can remember.
So let me just mention that we have, uh, in the past had condition, uh, had incorporated a condition of, for a, a binding agreement for whatever it is that we, we wanted to, you know, uh, insist on. So this, uh, i- this is something we have done. Maybe we should start, maybe I should start, uh, asking the committee, maybe we should get a sense of how many committee members are willing to say, to vote yes with conditions versus out and out no because of certain things. Does that, does that make sense? Um, this is not, not an official thing, but if I could get a sense of how many members are willing to agree that we could vote yes, but with conditions. So how do I, uh, Jerry, um, I don't know if I can get a show of hands, or Jerry, maybe you can just do a roll call just to have a sense of whether it seems like the majority of the people are willing to vote yes with conditions.
You would need a roll call.
Okay, that's fine. Anyway, this, it, it, any, any way we can do this, it's, this is unofficial. I just want to have a sense of where we're going, which road we're going down. So, all right, let's do the roll call.
Do you want to just do yay and nay and see that, Del, people can speak up?
If, if you can, I don't know if we can, can we do yay and nay and have a sense of who's saying yay? Jerry, I think you're the one who would be.
If you want it to be a legal vote, you have to have a roll call.
No, no, I don't want a legal.
Way, then it's an illegal canvassing of the committee. It's up to you.
Okay, I'm, I'm not looking for a legal vote. I just want to have a sense of which, which road we should actually even go down in the first place. Are we going yay or we're going nay? Let's do the roll call. It's, it's easier. I'm, uh, so I guess I'm first. I'm willing to say yes with conditions.
Wait, the roll call is officially, it's official vote, right?
Um, no, this is just, I just want to know somehow, some way, are we, are, are the majority of the members of the committee willing to, to go down the road of yes with conditions? And then we can.
We're just, Del, we're just taking the temperature.
Yes?
If I may. Um, can folks just use the, the, the raise hand function to kind of show which way they're going?
I, I, that's, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I wish I could.
This feels like we're voting twice.
Yeah, just raise your hand. Raise your hand. That's it.
Look, if we were, if we were in the room together, all of us.
No, Bozina's doing it.
If we were in the room together, okay, let's try that. We, 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 I wouldn't have to worry about this. I don't, this is not an official vote. But we have to move one way or another, you know?
Right. So if they, if they use that function, it kind of takes off some of that burden.
Majority of people want to say no. So just let's, you know, this is not official.
Does it just take in the temperature? Yeah.
So, um, that's very, I don't, I'm not even sure how to do the raising. So, um, that's very, I don't, I'm not even sure how to do the raising the hand thing. Where did it go?
I'm doing the smiley face.
Are we raising our hands to put yes?
I understand why we need to take the temperature of the room. I feel like, I feel like we just maybe nail the conditions down, and then if someone wants to make a motion, either no or yes with conditions, and then, you know, just play that out, because I, I mean, why do, you know? I feel like folks should, you know, argue for consensus one way or the other.
Well, my, my thing, Steve, what I'm thinking is, I have a sense, I have a feeling that from how many people have spoken, that if we start talking about conditions, then we're, I think we are thinking about voting yes with conditions.
Well, no, because it reminds me of River Ring, where, question, how, do you want to, how strong a message do you want to send? And how are the conditions?
We went there already.
If we say yes with conditions, saying, well, it's okay. But maybe if you build these, you know, if you include these conditions, that'd be nice too, versus saying no, we're not going to prove that, we don't want this thing to be developed unless, you know, A through, you know, G are those conditions.
Is there a problem with finding out, first of all, how many people want to vote yes versus how many people would like to vote no?
I understand what, what are the, I believe I love to understand what the condition are. I know which one are mine. I heard the other people, they had certain condition. Are we going to incorporate all the conditions?
Come on, Santi, stop it with the unrealistic.
I think Dell is just really. So why don't we start writing down the conditions?
I think, I think, I just, I think Dell is just saying, is there anybody here who just is the flat-out no?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Right, exactly.
Is anyone an absolute flat-out no? Thank you, Katie. Okay.
So Katie, your hand has been raised for half an hour, Katie.
Oh, wait. You're not, Katie, you're not a flat-out no. Verbally, I want to hear, is anyone a flat-out no? Okay, so let's, let's move on to what our conditions are then. Now we have some context, you know, conditions. So Katie has has suggested a community benefit agreement. I'm not sure what it is you want in the community benefit agreement. I, I guess for the park funding. And you're suggesting an escrow fund for, for the, for the luncheonette. I don't know. When you say an escrow fund for the luncheonette, are you, are you talking about an escrow fund to take care of any damages that, that, that the construction will cause to the luncheonette? I'm not sure what you're.
Yeah.
We've done that. We've done that in the past.
Yes, I mean, I don't know if that's typical. I don't know much about it, but yes, I'm suggesting that, whatever that language might be.
We've, we've done that, where an escrow fund had to be put aside for possible damage done to adjoining buildings. We did it recently, actually.
Dell, I'd like to suggest we take the two Manhattan Avenue properties out of the rezoning.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
I, I agree.
Agreed.
Because it sets a horrible precedent.
Yes.
I would like for them to consider the upper floors to be a little more contextual, so adding some level of brick and consideration for the environment in their building materials.
We have to, we have to talk about, because, let's come to some kind of a consensus with respect to the, the brick or masonry versus the glass. Now Katie felt that she wanted to see still some glass. And so let's talk about that.
I think it can be done with large windows of glass. You know, I kind of wish that we could, you know, share images, just to give you an idea, but you can have really, you know, I think obviously they're doing the glass, so that way the apartments have really good views, but I think you can do it so that it's not so heavy. But that it still has some brick running through the entire building, so it doesn't feel like two disjointed buildings.
How about we say at least eight, eight stories incorporate masonry into the design?
I'm good with that.
I, I, I mean, I'll go with what the majority says, but I, I like that, I like that the original building is different from the rest of it, and including the height of it, just.
It still will be, most likely.
Well, if, if it's eight stories, all the same facade, running up from top to bottom, it's not going to have that original look of the facade, or, and it'll be much taller in height than the, the Karen next to it.
Well, they have to have a setback for the zoning.
So Steve, are you, are you suggesting that the eight stories would, you're saying would incorporate masonry? So I, I don't know that you're implying that it has to be.
Well, I think, yeah, emulate the, on, on these upper floors, the original, the existing structure, the existing factory structure.
I think that would make it very massive, Steve. I just think it would have, I'm sorry to.
Not if it's setback and the architect, you know, he plays with different textures and window designs and trims and things. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be that, you know.
Can I, can I help you, help you a little bit with some comment?
Please.
Now, for example, just something very familiar to everybody, you know, I believe a beautiful project, one of the early one, which involves, there is brick, is the, is the hotel, is the Williamsburg Hotel. You know, and, you know, it was an historic building, you know, and the White Hotel, sorry. And, and so I, things that come in mind to me is that, is, is about, I know it was told to us that the building can be there. I see it being solid. I don't see it being dilapidated. You know, if we only think the White Hotel, how many stripping were done to bring to the attention of the brick? I hear Katie talking about the brick, and other you talking about the brick. Personally, I can only love that. So to me, it comes to mind. The restoration of the original building, maybe that's a possibility. A contemporary addition, you know, because the building could have had, if that building is maintained, we can have the brick. We don't need to take any element out. A contemporary addition, and that contemporary addition could be complemented by vertical forest. You know, so maybe we have the massing. So it is sort of adding an iconic new design to, to an historical. And despite the fact that Williamsburg, you know, in this area, it's not a designated historic district, but the brick is a side, is exactly what I believe the type of post-industrial artifact. You know, that always draws certain attention, you know, is, is always in context with our neighbor. And, and, and then probably will leave authenticity. But if we want to have the vertical forest and that environmental impact, definitely we're going to need a new structure coming there. And I don't think I'm against because a, a new architecture coming in. I'm against the quality of the architecture, and the contribution it leaves to the community, and the contribution it leaves to the environment. And that's why, again, I, my recommendation would be to include vertical forest together to complement Steve, I don't know, Trina, Katie mentioning the restoration of the building with a contemporary addiction, an iconic new design, whatever we want to call. And mentioning that the historic district here, William, the historic district, that not, despite the fact it's not a historic brisk, brisk game, we ask for the brick coverage. And typical of this type of post-industrial artifact.
So I, I don't, I don't, I'm afraid I don't understand, you know, specifically what you're suggesting when you say contemporary. Are you saying you would be okay with the, the glass with a vertical forest? Or you, are you, are you, um, saying that you want something that still has, has some, that still harps back to the original architecture?
Well, I mentioned the, the White Hotel, because just to you, just to you have an idea. Imagine that brick building, four-story, five-story that is there. And imagine the structure, which is not a vertical forest, by its glass, was added there. Now imagine the same things happening to this building with, maybe there is some glass, but there is also vegetation. There is actually a vertical park there. I believe this would be a great precedent there. So look at the White Hotel, look at the brick, look at the historic fabric. We have that there. If it could be maintained, a skin, like we added the oil sugar, we have maintained a skin. If they needed a dominoes, which is far enormous structure, this is.
So let's get specific on this, because we can't just say, I, I, I worry about being too vague, because then the city won't really pay any attention to what we're saying. You know, Steve is saying, let's have at least eight stories with, with some, at least some masonry. Are, are you saying there could be, are you suggesting less than eight stories, maybe six stories, and then the other three stories could be contemporary, but they would have a, a vertical forest? I, I think we need to have something that is more specific. Otherwise, I'm afraid that it'll just be too, too, too vague for, for any, anything, anyone to be able to really.
Well, my, my question is this, my question is this, Dell. Now, if we're talking this six-story, we're talking as a right, right? So as a right, you know, we don't have this, I'm sure even have this conversation. Now, if they're asking for, you know, and they get a third more of square footed space to really start looking, maintaining some of the historical building, of, you know, dead brick skin, adding an addition, which has to be contemporary, but it also can be environmentally affected and, 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 and have a vertical forest integrated there. Now, personally, if all these between us maintaining the historic fabric there, adding the benefit, because that's, I see that as a, the environmental aspect of vertical forest, I see that equal and more to a contribution to the community. You know, because we adding more park space in terms of oxygen, of benefit for the environment. So I see that as a community contribution in a way. Am I willing to have eight feet? I don't know. I would love to see the design, but eight feet, eight story. But if that eight story are covered in green and in leaves and in trees, maybe it is not that terrible. But I want to know your opinion too.
Well, I mean, I, my feeling is, if if we could have six stories where there's, and we've, we're incorporating the architectural masonry that, you know, that's, that is, that mimics the original design, and then the other four stories, if we could ask that we have that it could be contemporary, and we could suggest a vertical forest, that would, that, that's something that I would think might be okay. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, and at least it's also specific. But I think we need certain, you know, when we say to mimic the architectural design, are we talking about how many stories do we want? Do we, and, and are we giving them some freedom to, to do that? Steve, you, so what do people think about trying to suggest the, a vertical forest or some, something similar?
Dell, this is William Vega. I think if we want to make a statement about vertical forest, I think that's what our energy should be at. If we put too many asks, they may say no to everything, but if we want to make a statement, let's focus on what we want to see as a vertical forest. I think this is an opportunity to make that statement, and I think that's where we should make it as strong as possible, not get it watered down with other issues. That's my thought.
How, well, how do other people feel? I, I, I think that would be fine. I mean, I think we could say, or are you thinking not even have the, the, the mimicking of the original architecture? Don't put that, or can we put, you know, perhaps within the first five stories, six stories, they have to do that, and then they can have.
I think we should suggest, you know, to have some more of those floors, but I think strongly the committee is voting that we have, you know, they seriously consider the vertical forest. Yeah, that's, to me, I, if we keep adding stuff, because this is all, you know, all six stories, eight stories, or none at all, but let's just be strong about the vertical forest. That's just my thought.
Do we want to push the vertical forest, or do, do we want to push passive house and electric and the other things that Steve had mentioned are going on?
All those, all those.
Oh, I can push them all, but then we're, we're muddying it up if we're adding.
No, 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 I, I think all of that. I, I think, I think.
My hand is raised.
I expect you'll put your, these, these things into the condition. Question is, how strong do we want to be about suggesting or, or suggesting the vertical forest, or even having that as a condition?
My hand is raised, no.
Your, your hand is raised, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dell. I have been listening to, to Santi talk about the vertical forest as long as he's been on this board, and perhaps even before that. I still really do not understand it. I still believe that there needs to be more, some more studies conducted to see the sustainability of a vertical forest, the long-term effects of a vertical forest in terms of construction and how it impacts the structure itself. I think that the agencies that, where the recommendations are going, well, the recommendation is going to the developer, but if the developer doesn't understand themselves what this recommendation is about, this is really not going to hold water. That's my belief. And it's going to go in front of the agencies like city planning, where, okay, Alex Summer understands it, but does the rest of the body understands it? Can they vet it? Can they make this? How much leverage is this going to really have if nobody really understands it? As well as Santi. There has to be an educational component that goes beyond, hold on, there has to be an educational component that goes beyond Santi, you telling us all the time, some, it has to go higher. It has to be not just loud here. We get it. We've heard it. I'd like to learn more, Santi, but I'd like to know more in terms of not just the passion that you have, and I, I appreciate your passion, I really do. But I think that we need something more substantive than you just telling us about it. And yes, this is an opportunity to make that difference, but we need to back it up with, with some more education.
Are you joking, Maria? I, I believe it's not me that I'm telling you. You should, you know, you should just read. Maybe you didn't read. I mentioned it.
I read your email. I read the email.
Not my email. You just, you can go on Google. I mean, this is, this is reality. This is like saying that, that you are questioning passive house, or you are.
No, 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 I'm not questioning.
Oil is polluting the environment. This is.
I agree with Maria. I agree with Maria, actually.
Let's, let's, we have to.
Completely unfounded, and it's, it's really, I have to say, I mean, I, I'm shocked. These are, I don't have to tell you. It's not me telling you this. It's not me inventing this. This is all, this is already there.
No, I'm not saying that you've been drinking it, Santi.
Twenty minutes of this meeting, we've got it.
This is, those are built already. There are international words on this.
We, we understand this, and you've got a number of people on this committee telling you, and I've said it to you myself, that before you have people really embracing the idea of conditioning approval on a, a vertical forest, that I think that we need to bring, we need to educate the member, the board members and the committee members on just what it is. Now, I, I mean, I'm hearing a number of people saying here that they don't think, they're, they're not comfortable requiring a vertical forest at this point. I do think it's an incredible idea. I don't think anybody thinks it's something that you're making up. It's, it's definitely something that we could probably really grab onto once people feel more comfortable that they, they know. And, and just having people, telling people to go and read about it, that, that's not going to do it. It's just not going to do it. People, we don't have, people don't have the time to, to start researching something as complicated as, as, as a vertical forest. So let's try to move along here, because we have to make a vote. We have to vote on this tonight. And there is a, there is a. And there's a, there is a, um, there is a difference of opinion with respect to whether we leave the glass, all that glass, or we, um, we ask the developer to break it up so that the, uh, the, there is not such a, uh, a, a, a strong contrast between the first three floors and then the rest of the floors. I personally think it, I don't, I personally, whatever it's worth, I'm just one vote. I personally, when I look at the, the design with that, with that stark difference between the first couple of floors and the glass, I, the word that comes to my mind is a behemoth. I just think the glass looks so, um, ponderous and, and just out of context. I know they meant it to look light and maybe, maybe it would look light. Maybe I don't have a, a good enough ability to visualize. I don't, I don't know. That's, but I kind of, I'm in the, the, um, I'm, I guess I'm in the camp of people who don't like the, the, that huge amount of glass on, on top. So I think we need to, um, you know, have, have some kind of a consensus about that. I think that's going to be the biggest thing that we have to deal with. I think everybody's going to agree to having greenery and to having passive housing and having all electricity and all of that stuff. That's going to be an easy thing. But let's try to tackle this.
Can we add to the parks, um, what we're saying that in the parks, donation being made through a community benefits agreement that is, that it's substantial and sustaining?
Yes.
Just put that, those words in there and then.
Yes, yes.
Take it from there.
No, I'm sorry. This is Karen. I just wanted, um, if Steve, just if he could expand on, um, adding more masonry, do you mean, um, just adding more like brick? More floors of brick?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Yeah, like if you look at the, the building next door, eight sixty, which is a new building, it's, it's, it's all brick, kind of emulating a, you know, a historical style of kind of an old factory warehouse building in the neighborhood. And, and then it's, it's, there are step backs as you get higher. And then I think there's two, upper two floors, which are the further, further setback are all glass. So it's, you know, it's, um, it's kind of muted. It's still a little bit striking, but it's two floors out of either six or eight. And so it's a little, you know, it's a little more palatable, um, having, you know, um, over half the building glass. Yeah, I feel like it, it just, this, you know, the, having the original building emulated up and through at least six or eight floors, you know, using within the, I don't know, the historical style, the existing building, masonry and window treatment, et cetera.
What is the building next door? How many floors do you know? How many floors are, are the brick? You're, you're muted.
It's, I believe it's four.
I'm, I'm looking at it right, sorry. I'm looking at it right now. It's only like two stories.
It's on six stories, actually.
Not the brick.
Eight sixty is.
I'm, I'm looking at it right now.
How much is brick versus glass? That's, how many stories?
Does anyone know? Are you looking at it, Steve? Are you looking?
On, on Google Maps, it's four stories of brick in there and then there's a setback. So I think that whatever is above that is not really that visible from the street. Which I think could be considered in this recommendation that the building does have setbacks. So, you know, I think it's, I don't like to tell an architect how they should build their building, but I do think that it's important to recognize the, you know, recognize the context. Um, and, you know, the history of our neighborhood as well as using, I think, slightly cleaner building materials. But I, I think, you know, going back on what Steve said is, you know, integrating masonry, um, you know, and we could say it's six stories and we could say it's eight stories, but I think it's really, um, asking them to make that consideration. Um, you know, and it doesn't have to be all brick, but I think there are opportunities in their setbacks so that what we see from street level and from the park is more contextual than what they have now.
So could we say, uh, to, um, integrate masonry, uh, in the first, at, at least the first six stories? Would that satisfy everyone?
That would be good for me.
That would be good for me.
And, yeah, I would say that's good if the, the top two floors are setback, additionally setback, setback deeper. Instead of just having the upper floors kind of, I'm trying to find the original. I can't remember if there's, if the glass section has any additional setback, if it's all just one.
They do because they have the trees floating in them, remember?
Right. Also, six stories would work, work really well.
So integrate, integrate, so mimic the design, change the design to, to mimic the original architecture, integrating masonry in at least the first six stories with setbacks above?
Well, as they just pointed out, I think it already has setbacks on the upper.
Okay, so in the first six, at least the first six stories? Okay. Um, take the two Manhattan Avenue, uh, properties out of the rezoning. What about, um, the, uh, the commitment for substantial and sustaining funds to Mc, to McCarran Park?
Dell, I misspoke. Substantial sustained funds. So the.
Commitment for substantial sustained funds, right.
So that the, the funds get given over time.
Yes. To McCarran Park.
By means of a community agreement.
By means of a, yes, community benefit agreement.
Right.
Now, the, the, um, the benefit agreement would be with the Parks Department?
I think they can, Lincoln can work that out. I think that he, he wants to start using those and, but that at least gives him the support to work it out how he wants to.
Okay.
I think Dell, I don't know if it's worth it to put in there that the funds are in addition to the funds that would otherwise be.
Yeah.
Part of park funding, that they be additional funds as opposed to, I don't know how to put this.
How about if I say preferably because, um, we don't know that the parks funding might even, even for necessary essential things, sometimes they just take the money away from the, from the parks, you know? So how about preferably for, um?
Well, it shouldn't be right for regular park maintenance. I, I, I. Dell, that, that, it, it, it should, should be for augmentation and enrichment, really, of the park.
Well, how about to augment the, the, uh, funding that the park normally receives?
Correct, yes. That sounds great.
And please state McCarran's Park. Sometimes you can allocate these funds to other parks. So repeat McCarran, McCarran, McCarran. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's vital.
Dell?
Yeah.
It's Karen again. I, I don't want to go back down the vertical forest rabbit hole. However, is there any way that then we could recommend, um, that they at least look into the feasibility of doing a vertical forest? I agree a hundred percent with Marie and Katie that we really do need as a committee, as a board, more education on it. Um, but I'm, I'm just thinking maybe, you know, at least letting the developer see if it is feasible and then just getting them, you know, to come back and explain why or what, you know, why yes or why not.
Well, we could say, I, I don't know that we want to have them come back and explain why or why not, uh, especially since we've got to, oh, I, I don't know. I, I, we could do that or we could just say that it is recommended that the, um, the developer and the city discuss the feasibility of incorporating a vertical forest. How would that be?
That I would agree to. At least let, let the ball start getting rolling. If we're, if this is something that as a committee and as a board, um, that we want to stand by, um, moving forward after being educated more on it. Um, I think at least the awareness, let's start recommending it.
Thank you, Karen. That's a great idea.
So recommend that the city and the developer discuss the feasibility of incorporating aspects of a vertical forest.
Why aspect? It's a, a, a vertical forest as a system, architectural.
Incorporating, of incorporating a vertical forest.
Architectural topology. Let's mention as an architectural topology and a device, an architectural device. You're muted, Steve.
I agree. We, they need to go a hundred percent on it if they're going to do it.
Okay, so.
It can be defined in another way.
As an architectural device?
I can, let me see if I can give you some language.
Do you mean device?
Yeah, we can call it architectural device. That's always been defined.
Okay. So recommend the city and the developer discuss the feasibility of incorporating, uh, a vertical forest as an architectural device.
Uh, let's add, um, let's add a word important to say, architectural topology. And, and let's use as a reference, uh, uh, vertical forest, Stefano Boeri. We can use that reference. So there is no misunderstanding.
No, I don't, I'm not understanding what you're saying, Sante.
That the design was originally initiated by Stefano Boeri. We can add more point of reference so they can look deeply.
I think if they Google, they can, I think they'll know what it is. I mean, it is, as you said, it is something that people know.
Yeah, professionals know. Let's keep it simple because we don't want to get sidetracked.
Honestly, guys, I recognize, but I have to say that I don't understand why not knowing more, all this resistance. So what I can tell you is that this project was at like International High Rise Award in two thousand and fourteen. You know, prestigious international competition, you know? So then, and also the Council on Top Building in two thousand and fifteen, the Council on Top Building, and these are on Wikipedia, so, but there is far more than that. Uh, the Council on Top Building and Urban Habitat awards, a jury selected Bosco Vertigalli's Vertical Forest to be the best top building worldwide to meet.
So we are now recommending that they, that they explore the feasibility of incorporating a vertical forest as an architectural device. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and by the way, I'm thinking instead of mimicking, how about, um, with the word mimic instead of mimic, how about?
Replicating.
Replicate.
Emulate.
Reference?
Okay, or emulate, which is better?
Tomato, tomato.
All right. Let's, uh, move on here. We have other things. Steve, you had, um, a number of things you wanted to incorporate, include like, do you, do we want to say that they should use passive housing at, in, in the design?
They, yeah, they, um, I think more importantly is that they do not use fossil fuels for heat and air conditioning, that they use either renewable source, sources and or, you know, electrification for, um, yeah, for heat and, heat and air conditioning.
So, uh.
And then consider, and to say, and consider passive house technology for, uh, further reducing their, uh, carbon footprint.
So that they, the, the developer will not use fossil fuels for heating and air conditioning and consider passive house technology for further reducing car, its carbon, the carbon footprint?
Sounds good.
Do we still have a quorum?
Uh, if you, maybe you don't want to ask. It doesn't matter whether we have or not. If, if we don't have a quorum, then we will, then I'll still present this to the, to the board.
Okay.
Um, okay. Is there anything else we want to add here?
I want to thank everyone. Everyone's been doing such a great job. But you forgot about the commit, you forgot about the commitment to McCarran Park.
No, we didn't. That's, that's going to be a community benefit agreement.
I'm so, I'm so sorry. I put my kids to bed. You're right. I'm wrong.
That's gonna be right once in a while. Okay, okay. Um, let me just, um, I'm just looking at my notes here. See if I can come up with something else that you talked about.
Do we want to just leave it that ten stories is what we have to live with in order to get the nineteen units of affordable housing? Or do we want to put anything in it to question, to ask them to look into reducing the height? Or do we just leave it the way it is?
I, I, I think should look, I'm, I'm looking at a rendering now. I mean, ten stories is, is really tough. It's really tough. Um, I think eight, eight is a things like more reasonable height. And would be allowed on their current zoning with, um, you know, bonuses.
Would that reduce the affordable housing?
That would reduce the.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, you know, voluntary inclusionary housing versus mandatory. Well, the, the rezoning will do that. The height, you know, yeah, maybe the height will be less incentive for them to do it. Um, but you know, I'm thinking of, you know, rivering, obviously a much bigger project, but tended up, either they're spending money to create more senior housing in the district. Um, maybe they go above and beyond their minimum requirement with M I H, with affordable housing or senior housing or something.
I hope, uh, I'm, I'm personally not holding my breath for the senior housing because frankly, the, um, commitment seems rather nebulous to me, but I'm very much in favor of senior housing. So if that ever actually happens, that would be great. But if we're going to say, um, that they have to reduce it to eight stories, then we're, um, they're in the realm of as of right, yes?
Yeah. It is.
And we don't get the, the affordable units, all of those affordable units.
And I, I also wonder, as a newer member, when we have more conditions, does that lessen the strength of each condition?
I'm not aware that it does. Um, I think the conditions have to be as clear as possible.
I know the Borough President.
I don't think we have that many conditions here, frankly.
If we do it eight stories, they could just say, okay, we'll do it as of right and then we're going to get sixteen stories. I mean, they'll just do it really tall, which would be an option.
Stories are saying the, the really tall buildings around the park grandfathered the old zoning designation in.
Right, but if we say eight stories, then we're getting them down to the as of right and they don't have to.
Well, I just think if we're, if they want those, those extra condos looking over the park, which we will also get, we have to look at those condos when we go into the park and we. which we will also get, we have to look at those condos when we go into the park and we leave the park. And we feel like, are we we asking for enough for the community, for the park, for, you know, working working people?
I agree with you, Steve. I just I I absolutely agree with you and Trina too. If if there's a way to to lower the height.
I'm saying if, you know, yeah, I see if we remove the height, then it removes their incentive even to rezone. So but I'm saying so, but if, again, we're going to give the owners this huge financial benefit. And we're we have to live with looking at this thing. Well, hopefully, if they do actually redesign, it'll be more palatable. Then are we, I said, we as a community, are we feel like we're we're getting um like a fair a fair shake here?
Well, now this is completely different from what we've just worked on. So if if you want to go that route, um, you know, we've these recommendations have been based on the eyes. That's why I said in the very beginning, I wanted to know who wants because that to me is it's kind of like an absolute no. So if we're now saying, because we have
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm saying, okay. No, I understand that if if we we say no to ten story, you know, the ability to build ten stories and basically we're killing the whole thing.
Yes.
Um part of me does feel that. I would love to kill it, but I understand there's a lot of people in this, you know, in this committee who want to make a deal, you know, and see the affordable housing uh possibilities here. And maybe the park will get some love, maybe. So um but, said, I I feel like it it's um I feel like it's damaging to the park. You know, it's not physically in the park, but it'll feel like it is. So um and like I said, we're we deal with extra people who are going to be using the G train and the buses and the L train on the streets and making more garbage, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So um I feel like there in there should be a deeper a deep community benefit for that.
So so Steve, that's why I wanted to know in the beginning, are we doing, are we just saying no? We don't want anything more than uh eight stories?
Well, I'm saying with whether, you know, in the conditions, I'm saying in the conditions. I feel like maybe we should have, we have additional conditions or deeper conditions. And I'm not saying, I was saying, reducing the height is a condition. I'm saying, we want affordable housing. Do we want better A M I on affordable housing?
Well, we can do that. We can say we want more affordable housing. We could say we want, we we don't, you know, we want them to do more than what they're they're the minimal requirement. We can do that. And and by the way, so I don't forget, oh, no, we do have this this escrow fund for the um luncheonette. Do we have an amount that we want put in the escrow fund? I know we've done this before and I don't know how much um we required.
I don't think we put a number on it before, did we?
Okay, maybe we didn't.
So given what Steve just said, should we look for them to go ask, I don't know how you word this, but to go beyond what the the requirements of M I H, which are the nineteen units, but to look into additional units or
We could ask.
Look into what River Ring did, which is put money into whatever that, I can't remember the name of the fund is, that that um supported purchasing affordable land to build affordable for the city to build affordable housing. But somehow to to go beyond the minimum requirements of M I H.
We can ask for uh we can ask for another five percent uh uh or so, you know, additional uh affordable units.
I think that's, I think that's, yeah, we're running it up doing with the new units and it being like thirty five percent between the.
So we can say thirty five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody all right with that?
And then they can get creative about whether it's onsite or offsite or whatever, but at least it 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 says that we're not accepting the minimum for giving them what they want, the building on the park.
Thirty five percent affordable units.
And maybe that should become our new rallying cry as a community board.
Sure. I I I'm fine with that.
Yeah, those those M I H requirements are the floor. Those are the bare minimum. Any developer can add more units.
Absolutely.
Nineteen sounds like a lot, but in the, I guess, in the context of what they're getting, it's not.
No, it's it's not. I think I think thirty five is fine.
I think this is a great idea.
I don't see anything, I don't think any, I don't, I'm I'm just quickly going over my notes. I don't, I'm not seeing any more items that were in the various recommendations, but um.
Did we say something about the the retail being um local or locally sourced, or I can't remember?
Sure, why not?
That's not the right wording, but something that says that it's.
Not bars.
We could.
Just local routes, that the 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 retail has local routes.
Uh revived matchless.
Like the match.
Well, we could, we could say that we want them to offer um a uh and if, how how do we say it? Uh offer a lease to matchless?
But wasn't matchless not in their building?
Oh, that's right. It's not there. It's not their building. Forget it.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
You could say, you could say a preference for existing local businesses.
Okay.
Contribute to the retail diversity.
Yeah. So preference for local businesses uh and um focus on 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 retail diversity.
Or local businesses that contribute to.
That contribute to diversity.
Also be somebody coming, not be local, but want to come in and become local and bringing, I don't know, a boutique or something more creative, not necessarily something belong to entertainment, not focusing focusing strictly to hospitality and entertainment industry, but.
How about preference for local businesses and tenants that would provide retail diversity?
Perfect.
Good.
Yeah. Maybe maintaining a rental price of the commercial unit uh affordable enough so other business could engage, you know, because otherwise, if we keep ten thousand dollars a month, I I don't know if somebody else would be able to, I know it's a difficult things to ask, right, but affordability to the people, they are experts on affordability. I mean, it's fundamental, otherwise it's uh.
So how do we say that, though? How how can we put? I don't know how to.
I I I don't really don't think you can regulate that. I mean, there is no commercial rent control. I don't think anyone's going to, you know, that that's just going to get thrown away, I believe. Um it's come up a lot. I I don't think you can regulate that.
You know, I don't know if she's allowed to speak in the committee meeting, but Mary is still here. Do we want her to help us with language about um what we what we're asking for from a Karen?
Absolutely. I see, Mary. Can Mary, if Mary is willing to speak, please uh Jerry, if you can allow her to speak?
No, I'm here.
Oh, great, great.
So, yeah, I mean, I I don't have any specifics that I can give you right now. Um, you know, and and I'm sorry about that, but I can, you know, I'll talk to Commissioner Marr um and see if there's anything that we can share. Jerry, we can give you a call. If you'd like. Um but I, in terms of language, I'm not sure um what you'd like from us right now.
Well, I guess anything that you think would be productive or or helpful. Um and if you can get some language to me, I can always um put it into my report. And then everybody can see it and anybody who has uh an issue with the language that I use, they can let me know. Hopefully, that's not the day of the community board meeting.
Okay.
What happened last time and I wasn't able to even, you know.
Oh, no.
Look at it.
Yeah, no, I'll talk to um I'll talk to Commissioner Marr um and get back to you for sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep.
We don't want them to cheap out. We want we want to, we want it to be substantial.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
No, I think we all have um the interest of McCarran in mind. So um, you know, with with what you've been saying of what with what I've heard um throughout this whole meeting, I'll I'll bring it back to him.
So are we are we ready to vote on this? So anybody want to make a motion to vote yes with these conditions?
I want to make a motion uh no with these conditions based saying they need to to fulfill these conditions or no no bill, no no rezone or no project.
Um now, let me just tell you that in my personal opinion, for whatever it's worth, and I said this about the River Ring and I stand by it, I think a no unless they meet certain conditions is much more powerful. I I begged everybody to please go that route with the River Ring. And as far as I'm concerned, because we didn't, they just they just disregarded our, you know, conditions.
I'd like to second Steve's motion.
Fine. So this is no unless they meet the conditions.
I went through this before. I I would like, I'll visit, like to make a motion to um deny the the application unless, you know, the all the conditions that um you stated Dell are fulfilled.
All right. So this is a motion to deny unless the uh following conditions are met. Jerry, can we have a a roll call?
I think you need to read the conditions to make the motion complete.
Okay, so.
Can you read the condition on the vertical forest, please?
Let me, I'll go through the whole thing. Um that there will be a community benefit, that there the developer will commit to substantial sustained funds uh to McCarran, to to uh to McCarran Park by means of a um a community benefit agreement. Uh and the funds will uh will, the funds will augment funds that the park would normally receive. Next is that there will be an escrow fund set aside for damage done to um the adjoining building.
Potential damage.
Potential damage. Hold on.
Lunch and that building.
For the, okay, we can say the luncheonette building.
We need to um, motion's on the floor, but it's just so vague.
Yes.
An amount agreed upon between the owner of the um.
If you want to withdraw the motion, you can make changes. Other than that, let the chair read them, read.
Let me, let me read, let me read this. Okay, so escrow funds uh set aside for potential damage done to the uh the the luncheonette, the not the adjoining adjacent luncheonette building. Uh the sign will be incorporated into the facade. Um that they will change their design to uh to replicate the architecture of the original building and to integrate masonry in at least the first six stories. Um the next is that they will take two.
Dell, please put the sign in there specifically?
You have to let me read this and then you can add to the sign, you, I I guess I should say the name, the actual the royal lace paperwork sign, I should say that. Okay, um that they will change or alter the design to replicate uh the original uh architecture and and integrate masonry in at least the first six stories. Next is to take the two Manhattan Avenue properties or out of the rezoning application. Um that there will be a preference for local business and tenants that will um that will provide retail diversity. We recommend that the city and the developer discuss the feasibility of incorporating a virtual forest as an architectural device, that there will be thirty five percent affordable units, uh that they will not use fossil fuels for heating and air conditioning, and consider passive house technology for further reducing the carbon footprint. That's it. That's that's that's, those are the conditions.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Dell, take.
Yes, this is to deny unless the conditions are met. Yes.
Maria Vera? Trina Makiva?
Yes.
Stephen Chessler?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Abraham Lievitz? Sante Misseli?
Abstain.
Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves?
Abstention.
Isaac Soffer? Robert Solano? Stephen Weidberg?
Yes.
William Vega?
Abstain.
Simon Weiser? Michael Andrews?
Yes.
Keith Berger?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Michael Kawachka?
Abstain.
Katie Napolitarski?
Yes.
Allison Stone? Ten yes, zero no, four abstention. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Um it's uh before ten. And um you all, day four meeting. Thank you, Dell.
See you, Dell.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Have a good night, all. Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.